Give everybody a chance to get in their seats. Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for running late tonight of all nights. I was invited to a fundraising dinner for the South Florida Boy Scout Council. Something's supposed to start at 6:00, but it didn't get going until 6:30, and at that point, you're kind of stuck. You just can't get up and leave. And it was down at the Legion Post on 64th Street. And you can't afford to speed through Biscayne Park. You all know what that's like. So I apologize for running late. And if we're all set... Oh, I can't see the clock from here, but I'll... My watch? We'll call it 7:20 on my watch. All right, let's, uh... Call the meeting to order. This is the North Miami Planning Commission. Start time will list at 7:20 PM. Thursday... No, no, Tuesday. Where's my Tuesday? Where's my... Oops.
Tuesday, March 5th.
Yeah, Tuesday, March the 5th. Find that page. Ah, dah 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 dah. That's what happens when you run late, you know? Well, we're Tuesday, March the 5th anyway. Yeah, what do you got?
You want us to switch with you so you can get started?
All right. Tuesday, March the 5th. Okay. Please scan for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Seifried.
Present.
Mr. Ernst.
Uh, excused.
Ms. Fiesemee.
Excused.
Ms. Harwitz.
Excused.
Mr. Eich.
Present.
Mr. Castor.
Present.
Mr. Privatel.
Present.
Ms. Schwartzbaum.
First item up, of course, will be the approval of the minutes of our preceding meeting. Do we have a motion on the floor from Kenny Eich, second by Jean Castor? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Madam Secretary, the minutes are signed.
As a point of order, Mr. Chair, there is, uh... D was omitted, amendment to the agenda.
All right.
Just following the procedure. There is... There are no amendments to the agenda.
Okay, so we have no amendments.
Right.
So we're... We're fine. Ah, haha! We're fine tonight. Ah, that's wonderful. So we have no continued public hearings and no communications, so let's go on to item five. Public hearing PCO 1-13. Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida authorize an approval of the conditional use permit in substantially the attached form, transferring 27 bonus units from outside the neighborhood redevelopment overlay, NRO District Secondary Pool, of 1,000 floating residential units for the property known as Parkview Villas, generally located on the north side of Northeast 135th Street at approximately 5,289 feet east of Biscayne Boulevard. In accordance with Article 4, Section 4-204 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances Land Development Regulations, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Tanya Wilson Sejour with the Community Planning and Development Department. Staff is requesting that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed resolution and conditional use permit, requesting a transfer of 27 bonus units from outside the neighborhood redevelopment overlay district secondary pool of 1,000 floating residential units for the property known as Parkview Villas, generally located on the north side of Northeast 135th Street, approximately 5,289 feet east of Biscayne Boulevard, and forward said conditional use permit to City Council for final consideration. Just to provide some background on the bonus provision itself, back in 2007 through Policy 1.12.1 of the Comprehensive Plan, the mayor and council established a primary pool of 5,000 floating residential units to encourage redevelopment in designated areas within the city. And as such, the primary pool consisting of 2,200 floating residential units have been set aside for use within the neighborhood redevelopment overlay district, 1,800 floating residential units for the central city district, and a secondary pool of 1,000 floating residential units for development outside the NRO District. Now, the current requests, we have an applicant, 135 Biscayne LLC, who owns a 1.2 acre site containing 15 platted lots located on the north side of 135th Street that's requesting bonus units, and the subject property is located outside the NRO District. It has a medium-density residential land use category and is zoned R5, which permits a maximum building height of 75 feet and a density of 16.3 residential units per acre. Based on the current R5 zoning designation, the property is allowed to build 21 residential units as of right. However, based on submittal on December 10th, 2012, the property owner filed a conditional use permit application with the Community Planning and Development Department requesting a transfer of 27 additional bonus residential units from the existing secondary pool of 1,000 units in order to construct 48 garden apartment units. Now, based on the code, all requests for conditional use permits must be consistent with Article 3, Section 3-405 of the Land Development Regulations. Staff has provided a detailed analysis in your staff report, and based on a review, staff believes that applicant has met the criteria as outlined in our code. Staff is recommending approval at this time, subject to the following conditions: that the applicant shall consolidate all 15 lots in the proposed development through a waiver of plat. The applicant would also furnish a copy of the recorded document to Director of Community Planning and Development once the instrument has been recorded with the county. Condition two, that the applicant is required to obtain site plan review and approval for the proposed new development prior to obtaining final building permits, and as such, applicant shall contact our zoning administrator in order to obtain submittal instructions and subsequently file a site plan application. Condition three, that in lieu of LEED certification rating, the applicant agrees to obtain certification from the Florida Green Building Coalition to validate the proposed green elements of the future development prior to obtaining final certificate of occupancy. The applicant shall provide registration receipt from the Florida Green Building Coalition showing intent to achieve FGBC Gold Designation prior to final council consideration. The applicant shall comply with all conditions listed in Exhibit 1 of the approved conditional use permit that's attached to your staff report, and condition number five, that applicant comply with all other city or county regulations as it relates to zoning, parking, landscaping, school concurrency, and utilities. The applicant is here tonight, Mr. Chair, and wishes to make a presentation at this time.
As a point of order, Mr. Chair, both of these items are quasi-jurisdictional in nature, and I would like to provide the oath for anyone speaking this evening, on any of the two items on the agenda, please stand. Anyone desiring to speak this evening on any one of the two items, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll call the applicant forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, good evening. My name is Manny Sinolofsky. My business address is 1800 Eller Drive, Suite 500, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and I'm here representing the applicant. The applicant that is here tonight is the same owner, if you will, that previously intended to develop the 15 townhomes. It's not a different entity. We agree with staff's recommendation for approval. We don't have any issues whatsoever with the qualifications, or for that matter, the conditions of approval, with the exception, if it's possible, that we have the ability to certify the project under the National Home Builder Association's sustainable standards as opposed to just certifying it under the Florida Green Building Coalition. Being that the project is purely residential in nature, and we are members of the Home Builders Association, there is a rating system that's much more, we believe, appropriate for residential development. That's, in effect, the rating system that we would like for you to allow us to use. Nonetheless, if you tell us that it's impossible, that it can only be Florida Green Building Coalition, we will deal with that. But our experience has been in certifying projects using LEED, using the Florida Green Building Coalition, and using the National Home Builders Association when it relates to residential development, the Home Builders Association is much more appropriate. That would be the only, if you will, condition that we would like for you to consider different. Other than that, we're very satisfied with the recommendation for approval. We take the opportunity before a presentation to thank staff for being so helpful, to thank the community that we met with at Arch Creek, to thank some of the elected officials that joined us at a community meeting, and I'm happy, if you will, to proceed and make a very brief presentation so that you have a better understanding of the proposed development.
All right, are we now going to get a presentation on development? Yes. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Okay. The property, as you heard, is 1.2 acres. It is on 135th Street. It is, in effect, about a mile, just a little bit under a mile, east of Biscayne Boulevard. Okay? The project sits, if you will, with a multi-story apartment building immediately to the west. And Jose, can you show us where west is there? Okay? And immediately to the east, there is a townhouse community of townhomes that I believe are plus or minus three stories tall. Okay? To the north of us is a state preserve, state park, beautiful, beautiful area. And obviously, across the street from us, we've got a significant median running down 135th, which we are not looking to change that median at all. And then on the south side of the street, a number of buildings with significant height, that front water, because there is water view on the other side of those buildings. It's important for you to know that, from a setback standpoint, we purposely moved our building as far to the west as we could because we want to keep 100-foot minimum between the building line. Jose, can you show us where that building line, at the edge of the staircase on the west? From that building line to the immediate building west of us, which is also a multi-story building, there is 100 feet minimum separation between our property line and the actual building. There is actually a parking field on our west side. And it's important for you to know that on the west side, we, in effect, have no windows that could view any of the units that, in effect, are to the west. We have stair towers, we have enclosures on the west, but in effect, we have no residential unit that would be looking to the west, or vice versa, that our neighbors to the west could worry about privacy and looking into our units to the east. Similar to the east side... Jose, can you show the edge of the building? From the edge of the building to our property line, we have approximately 73 feet, and beyond that 73 feet, to the nearest building line, which would be the first townhome that is east of us, there's another plus or minus 20-plus feet, achieving, if you will, the 100-foot minimum that we believe is the appropriate building-to-building setback. As it relates to the setbacks themselves, nonetheless, on the east side, we have a minimum setback of 55 feet and 4 inches. That's on the east. On the west, we have a minimum setback of 40 feet. On the front, to the right of way, we have a minimum setback of 55 feet, 4 inches. And to the rear, we have a minimum setback of 15 feet. The building height, as you heard, can be as tall as 75 feet. The reality is, our roof, our roof, is at 51 feet, 4 inches. 51-4. We do have, and I'm going to show you the elevation in just a little bit, we do have some architectural features, some towers that we're raising, if you will, to give an attractive look to the building, but there is no residential unit, okay, above 51 feet, 4 inches. That is the roof line throughout the building top. Going back to the site plan, and I'll talk to you about the site plan on the building, and then I'm going to tell you some of the modifications that we made as a result of meeting with the community. Okay? The first modification, actually, going back to the site plan, we have 100 parking spaces for 48 units. Per code, we would multiply 48 times 1.5, and I think that would give us, I don't know, 72 parking spaces, if I'm doing the math correctly. We have 100. What we've done is, we, in effect, have put the majority of the parking underneath the building. Of the 100, we actually have 34 outside the building, and the balance, 66 are under the building. We're doing that by allowing the use of lifts for certain amount of parking, where the individual homeowner would control his or her lift. Very popular, very traditional in condominium projects. You don't have to worry about who's parked underneath you because you own both the top and the bottom. Something else that you should know, all of the units are two bedrooms, two baths. Originally, when we submitted the application, we actually had 16 units that were one bedroom, and we heard from the community that they felt that that may not be appropriate for a number of reasons. We confirmed to the community that this was going to be a condominium. We have no intention of telling you that it's a condo, only to come in and rent. That won't happen. Very simply, it just won't happen. In order to, in effect, promote a certain demographic, we changed all of the units to two bedrooms, two baths, and we'll speak about the units in a moment. In terms of landscaping, a significant amount of buffer to the east, a significant amount of buffer to the west, certain transparency to the south so that we can enjoy the median, and in some cases, views across the buildings that are on the water. And then obviously, a lot of transparency to the north, where we've got the great straight state park and a lot of phenomenal views. From a sustainability standpoint, the building specifically runs east-west. The short part of the building is to the east morning sun and to the west afternoon sun, those being the hottest suns of the day. Half of the units are viewing north, wonderful light, natural light, no heat whatsoever. And to the south, by virtue of the balconies and the overhangs that we're proposing, again, significant amount of natural light coming in with no heat to the south. We have bicycle parking areas, we have connections throughout the site plan to the pedestrian sidewalk system outside of the property, and then we have ties to the bike path that currently exists in the community. And those are all site plan issues, but they're part of the sustainability requirements that we want to satisfy. We have, on the ground floor, a pool as part of our amenity package. We have a series of other amenities inside the building, and we'll go over that in just a moment. Jose, why don't we, in effect, go quickly to the floor plan? Okay? And I apologize that the floor plan is in black and white and not rendered, but it's a very simple and classical double-loaded quarter with units to the south and units to the north. In the center, there is a significant amount of common spaces and opens to natural light. To the north, we have on every floor, on floors 2, 3, 4, and 5, what we call an amenity space. On one floor, it could be a gym. On the next floor, it could be a, let's say, card room. On another floor, it could be a lounge. On another floor, it could be a children's play area. We haven't determined exactly what the amenities will be, other than we segregated the space for it, because based on the mix, we believe that we'll finalize that. In addition to that, every floor, every floor has its own laundry facilities, as opposed to having to put a stackable small unit. We said, you know what? Let's get those out of the units. Let's create the laundry amenity on a per-floor basis. And in addition to that, every floor has the proper utilities and custodial spaces, and so on and so forth. Okay? There are stair towers on either end, and something that you should know, as part of our sustainable guidelines or criteria, the dumpster enclosure for the building is actually inside the building on the ground floor. You would be able to walk from your unit to a trash chute, let your trash come down to the dumpster, which would be literally inside. There is no outdoor dumpster. There is no outdoor enclosure. It's literally within the building footprint downstairs on the ground floor. Jose, go back to the site plan so we can locate that. Let's just show where that is. Okay? The dumpster enclosure would be behind doors and, in effect, not outside. Let's go to the elevations a second. Purposely, the building wants to be symmetrical, and purposely, the building nonetheless wants to have certain architectural whimsical feel to it. You can see that the end units, because they're in the end, have a bit more balcony than the center units. You can see nonetheless that all the units share a common elevator lobby at every level. Okay? And you can see that the ends of the building, either the west end or the east end, are quite solid because the stair towers and other utility spaces are there. Nonetheless, we bring natural light to the stair towers, and we bring natural light to the utility spaces. Jose, show the 51-4 of the roof line. Okay? And you can see that above that roof, we have parapets that rise, and then above that roof line, we have towers on the ends and towers in the center, again, just to give more character, more hierarchy, and more definition to the building. Those towers also allow us to create privacy, both from our building to the neighbors and from the neighbors inside to our building. Quickly, I want to go over the changes that we incorporated after meeting with the neighbors. Unfortunately, we were not able to meet again with the neighbors to review these modifications. We met with them, we spent a great evening together, we took very specific notes of the issues that were of concern to them, and we believe we've addressed them. We wanted to review these modifications with them, and for a number of reasons, time did not permit us to meet, although we did try a number of times to set up that meeting. From the items that we discussed with the neighbors that we've included, views, we have no views either to the east or to the west. End of story. Not a little bit, not a little less, zero. Zero views where we can look out to the neighbors to the east or the west, or for that matter, they can look into us. There was a concern about whether we had laundry facilities, are the stackable units really going to work, are people going to be doing laundry outside? Bottom line is, we created, on every floor, the ability of laundry facilities, full-size washers, dryers, on every floor for that floor. They were concerned that we didn't have enough amenities. So in addition to the pool, which they had seen, we added on every floor what we call an amenity area, so that literally those homeowners that would create a community inside the building would have those amenities in the building and not necessarily to have to leave the building to benefit from those amenities. There were concern about the mix of one and two bedrooms. I think more concern about the ones, no concern about the twos, so we made all the building, 100% of the building, two bedrooms, two baths. There were concern about parking. They didn't feel that one and a half parking spaces per unit made any sense, so we said, hey, would you consider supporting the use of lifts, knowing that this will be a condominium and knowing that we're going to have 23 homeowners that are literally going to have the benefit of having two cars undercover, and literally, they will have the key to their lift to handle both their parking spaces? And it appeared to us that they were satisfied with that. Obviously, that also reduces the amount of surface parking outside of the building, what we refer to as the heat island effect, by moving hot cars, if you will, underneath the building. They wanted to make sure that we promoted pedestrian activity, which we intended to, including the bicycle racks and the bicycle parking that we have. We discussed with them the setbacks. The setbacks haven't improved, but we assured them that we would have, in addition to the setbacks, a significant amount of buffer of landscaping, both on the east and the west. I think that is the essence of our presentation. I just want to reiterate what staff has told you, that by right, we could have 21 units. I want to suggest to you that by right, and certainly subject to your deliberation tonight, the 25 units to an acre that we're asking in terms of bonus is not an invention of ours. Your code allows that. Your code, in effect, permits that. If we meet criteria, we've met the criteria. In every case, we've actually exceeded the criteria. So it's not a waiver, it's not a variance, it's a bonus that if we meet certain criteria, you can certainly approve. With that, I think we're going to take a seat, answer all your questions. I see some of the residents here this evening that we met with. If they have any questions, we'd like an opportunity to respond to them, and we look forward candidly to being part of, not only the community of the City of North Miami, but also being part of the community of Arch Creek. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Members of the public wishing to address the issues or raise questions are invited to come forward. Please state your name and address. Try not to be repetitive, and feel free to ask the developers any questions.
Hoping this is a good microphone. Good evening, Commission. My name is Carol Prager. I am a resident of Arch Creek East 25 years. I am currently the president of the Arch Creek East Neighborhood Association. I am here this evening as a resident and not as the president of Arch Creek East because we, as this gentleman explained, did not have an opportunity to meet a second time to review the changes to his proposed project after the initial meeting with the residents of Arch Creek East. Our attendance was very high. We had close to 45 residents show up. They came and went during the course of the meeting, which I'd like to point out to you is a very large number of people to show up for our neighborhood association, so there was great interest in this proposed project. Yes, a number of items that we were concerned with have been addressed by the developer in terms of parking. There are some items here that have been added to the project that the residents of the neighborhood have not been able to fully examine or digest. I will say that the communal laundry situation on each floor caused a great deal of discussion amongst some residents. In the older condominium buildings of 30 years plus, a communal laundry room was something that was a given. In newer developments, however, in the 21st century, and when you're looking at new condominium developments, even at Biscayne Landing, you have in-unit laundry. So for some people, myself included, this seemed to speak to a rental property. The other thing that was brought up, and again, this is above my pay grade, and I'm not quite versed in a lot of these financial issues with loans for the building of rental units or rental buildings or condominiums, there was something that was explained to me, that there is a declaration of condominium when a developer goes for a loan at a bank, and that would be something that we would be interested in, so that we would be certain that what is being built here is, in fact, a condominium, that it would indeed promote ownership, and that we wouldn't find ourselves in a situation where, having after-built these things, people weren't interested in buying them, and therefore, it turned into a rental building. I will tell you that the inventory on 135th Street is very high when it comes to rental units. We have a sufficient amount of rental buildings on 135th Street. There are a number, there's a great number of rental units within the condominium buildings themselves, whether they're investment properties that people have, or if individuals bought the condominium when the market was high and they've been forced to rent the unit out. I will tell you that, having lived here 25 years, I have a very good sense of the pulse of the neighborhood. My personal concern is 100 additional cars into my neighborhood is something that gives me pause. I understand that the gentleman claims that he's met a threshold that entitles him to have certain things above and beyond what is on the books of 21 units. This is an established neighborhood. We have one entrance in, we have one entrance out. We have some issues in terms of being able to sustain our neighborhood to be closed through traffic that we are constantly dealing with. So... So my point being is that although this is a wonderful vision, there's still some concerns about the footprint of this building and the extra units that they're asking, and what that impact is going to have on this neighborhood. We certainly understand, of course, I certainly understand, the need for this developer to want to build on this property. It's in his best interest. But we certainly are very, still concerned, very much so, about what impact this type of building is going to have on the existing neighborhood. I'm not here personally to be opposing it, but I'm not here to fully embrace it. I hope that you understand, as fellow residents, fellow neighbors, I respect your knowledge and your experience in sitting on this board, that you very carefully examine what the petitioner's asking for you, from you tonight, and weigh that against what impact that's going to have on our neighborhood. I hope that we can continue to have an open dialogue with this. And again, one of the biggest concerns is the communal laundry and the addition of with the two two-bedrooms. Someone pointed out that if we had four adults living there, you're talking potentially four cars. I mean, so there's a lot of things here that we're a little bit concerned with. I don't want to say that we're not embracing any of this, we just really want to give this maybe a little bit more thought and really understand exactly what it is that this particular project, how this particular project is going to impact the existing neighborhood. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item? Any other member of the public? No, all right. The applicant wishes to rebut or add commentary?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of follow-ups in response to the neighbor's presentation. We were ready to meet again with the community at least three weeks ago, if not before, and I personally attempted a number of times to have that meeting. Unfortunately, not because of us being able to attend, because we made ourselves available 24/7, that meeting did not occur. I want to reiterate the fact that this is a sustainable project, that the intent really is to market this condominium, and I heard the word rental a number of times, and I want to clarify and reaffirm and reconfirm that this is not a rental project. This is a condominium, and we have no problem whatsoever providing, at the appropriate time, condominium documents for the record. I don't think we have any intention for the neighbors to have commentary on the condominium documents, but for there to be evidence that we've satisfied requirements and created the proper documentation, that is not a problem whatsoever, none whatsoever. As a sustainable development, part of the lifestyle, candidly, that we are going to sell is just that, that you're only a mile away from Biscayne Boulevard, where you've got hundreds, if not thousands, of services available to you, that in effect, we don't anticipate having to have, literally, to support two cars per unit, but we acquiesce to that because of the fear that the community has for a number of reasons. But being that ours is not the rental market, ours is absolutely the condominium market, we feel very certain that the parking that we're providing is in excess of what's necessary for the lifestyle that we are in effect selling, but nonetheless, we acquiesce. We acquiesce. I'm not sure what the issue is with the communal laundry room. When we showed the individual units with individual washer and dryers, I understood, and maybe it was my misunderstanding, that that was not preferred. So I said, no problem. We'll give the square footage back to the unit, we'll put the communal laundry room. If the communal laundry room, one per floor, two washers and two dryers, is a problem, no problem. We'll put them back in the unit. I just need some direction. Whether we're going to add 100 cars or not, the reality is, we're providing parking for 100 vehicles, that doesn't mean that we're adding 100 trips a day. Absolutely not. Absolutely not. We believe that because it is a sustainable project, because we're going to sell a lifestyle that people are going to want to invest in, because it's going to be a little more expensive than the ordinary residential home. Not only is it going to meet 2010 Florida Building Code requirements, but it's going to meet significant other requirements, it'll be a bit more expensive. And the reality is that we don't believe for a moment that that's going to attract those that are interested in having multiple cars, but the reality is that we're providing additional parking, in effect, in response to the community. We haven't added anything, anything, to the plans, nothing, zero, that we, in effect, in here, when we met with the community, and we understood that it was important to them. If there's anything that we added, that for whatever reason, over the course of the last three weeks, is not important any longer, we will remove it. But candidly, we delayed coming to you in January as a result of not being able to meet with the community, not because we weren't available. We were there. The night that supposedly the community was going to meet, we ran around every single civic center in the city of North Miami, looking for the meeting, only to find out that the meeting had been canceled or postponed because of improvements that were occurring at the particular center where the meeting was going to occur. So we postponed coming to you in January to attend that meeting. That meeting didn't occur, we said, fine, we'll come back in February. The bottom line is, we couldn't come back in February and meet with the community. We said, fine, we'll meet with you, we'll come to March. If this is an intention for us to step back and to say, we'll come back next month because we want to meet with the community, we're here tonight. If the community can be exact on what it is that they're concerned with, exactly, they will get an answer. They may not get an answer that they like, but they will get an answer, because we believe that we've responded to every item that the community requested, and we're happy to do it tonight. But candidly, we really would like to move on. There's a process that, this is only the beginning. We still have to submit and go to PNZ, we have to go to, I mean, there's a process, okay, where the detail of the detail of the detail will be evaluated, I'm sure. Tonight is about whether there's a merit to 48 units as opposed to the 21. I can tell you that it may be impossible to develop this project without the units that we're requesting, for a number of reasons. None of them that are important to you, but important to the reality of the project. So to the extent that we're ready, that we're willing, and that we've done everything we believe that the community has asked for, and if there's anything that they don't want, or anything that they need further explanation, we will explain it. But we believe, in all earnest, that we've done precisely what we've told the community that we would do, and we would like your consideration, and for that matter, your approval of the additional units so that we can move forward. We're ready to move forward, we're ready to join the community.
All right, thank you, sir. Last call, for anyone wishing to speak to this item. Final call, hearing none, public hearing is closed. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, it is now your opportunity to raise your issues and ask questions of the developer. I'll start to my left, Mr. Prebetel.
Normally, I try to resist being involved in design issues, but in hearing, micromanaging design issues, but in hearing the concerns of citizens in the area, they want a slightly better product, and I just wanted to throw out, there was a concern for the, having a washer and a dryer inside the unit.
Mr. Prebetel, excuse me, sir. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you were on.
Yeah, I'm on, okay. I'll speak a little closer. Washer and dryer in the unit, and I guess increasing the value, and I'll throw this out, I know we're not supposed to, but that's easily achieved, and this is a test, actually, if we can get this, pardon my sketch, but if you take your, where the kitchen is, behind the entry door, normally, the corners of kitchens are sort of a waste anyway, yet there's plumbing right there. That same location can be used for your washer and your dryer, it would tie into your lines very easily, it's hidden behind the front door a little bit.
Not a problem.
Sort of easily solved without losing valuable space.
Not a problem.
It's a quick thought.
Not a problem.
The other thing is, and again, this is not in terms of personally redesigning, but in trying to get a better product for the neighborhood and for the citizens, and I'm not too sure, maybe there's an explanation for it, but your balconies are off the middle and second, the second bedroom, in each case. And I know you've designed the fenestration, the exterior of the building, and that's pretty much locked in. But I wonder if you've considered, in that second bedroom, in flipping it, basically a mirror image, and by doing that, and there's actually a planning reason for this, by doing that, that round item, I believe, is a water heater. The water heater will be closer to the bathroom. The closet will actually provide a sound device between the second bedroom and the first bedroom, and then you have sort of a blank wall that leads to the living room. And the planning aspect of this is that you can then take down that wall, and it can be then a one-bedroom with a large living dining area, and therefore, you get a different clientele that might be, have a little bit more value to it. You're not forcing everybody to be in a two-bedroom unit, it could be a nice one-bedroom unit with an ample extended living area, which will then allow that same living area to actually get access to the balcony without going through an extra small bedroom, which makes it very, kind of awkward, to say the least, I would think. So it's just, this doesn't cost anything at all, except for to reskinch it, and just a suggestion.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Prebetel, Ms. Schwartzbaum.
Thank you. I don't know that that laundry issue is so compelling for the neighborhood. It would seem that that would be an issue for the buyer of the condominium and not for the rest of the block. Personally, I like laundry, but I don't really see how that has any impact on what you're saying to us tonight. There were three points, the declaration of condominium with the bank, would you just briefly address that? And if you, you say you do have that, you don't have that?
Let me clarify.
I'd like to.
This is step one of a process. It's somewhat of a lengthy process. When we are ready to submit the application of the condominium documents to the state, we will give a copy of that condominium document to the city, absolutely no problem. None whatsoever.
If I may interject, the declaration of condominiums would also have to be recorded, so it's going to.
Absolutely.
End up, yeah, after the state approves, prior to the turnover, it's going to be recorded, so all the purchasers that will come subsequently will have access to that document.
There's no closing without that document. You're absolutely correct.
Okay, so the third point was the cars. I'm not an architect like Bill, but from a common sense point of view, 100 cars on a street that length does not seem like a lot for a residential property. They don't all come and go at the same time, you could get 100 cars coming in on evening to a restaurant. I didn't really see any real compelling reasons here not to go forward.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bonnie. All right, moving to my right, Kenny. Kenny Each.
I have a, actually, a couple of concerns here, a couple of concerns with, the documents that I received, the documents that I received, and I have to address this to staff, do not say anything about this being a condominium. What I received was apartments, 750 square feet to 950 square feet, and 48, I see nothing in the proposed resolution to go before the council, if this was to be approved tonight, that this is going to be a condominium. And in fact, the other question I have today, I have quite a few questions for the developer, but I have.
No problem.
Couple of questions for staff here. I'm a little bit concerned, on number seven, on the analysis, if I may, under this analysis here on the old project, 750 to 950 square feet, as proposed, it is not anticipated, just the last two lines, that the use, livability, value, and development of the adjacent property is not anticipated to adversely impact the use, livability, value, and development of the adjacent properties. Now, what concerned me is when we originally got these documents, a couple of months ago, before I got the additional ones, I had underlined this, and I was concerned about this. The applicant proposes to develop the vacant lot into modern market rate garden apartments with one and two-bedroom units, ranging between 750 and 950 feet in size. As proposed, it is anticipated to adversely impact the use, livability, value, and development of the adjacent properties. Now, I'm concerned about a number of issues. I seen 135th Street changed from 1971, the Adler townhouses went in, and I remember when we were going to do the outrigger on, up there on the corner now, I forget what they call it now, on 135th Street and Biscayne Boulevard. I seen that street changed into the beautiful street that it is today. And I am concerned, I am concerned, I see these beautiful townhouses, people own property, I am concerned about putting this type of a project in there. The street is a one-way going west, one-way going east, 100 extra vehicles is a lot of vehicles, number one. Number two, I am concerned about the original report here that said it would adversely affect the values of the properties and the additional properties in the area. I don't know if I would want, if I had those beautiful townhouses to the.
It's a typo.
To the east of this project, I would want another apartment building there. I thought that, I thought that originally, I thought that originally was going to be a townhouse development, I'm sorry.
That's a typo, Commissioner Each.
Oh, that's a typo?
And that's been corrected in the new report.
Okay, all right.
And if I could speak to the garden apartment language, the original letter of intent that was submitted did indicate that it was a rental project, and I think the applicant has pointed out that since they've met with the community, they've made that change. So we would just request an updated letter of intent that clearly states that now they're proposing condominium units.
So now we're doing a condominium, all condominium units, but now how about in our documentation to the city council? And the exhibits A and V, I believe you have on there, are we going to say that when we present this to the city council?
That will be amended, once updated, letter of intent is provided before it gets to city council. It will reflect the current project as proposed tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Each, just to rest the issue concerning the city council, the mayor and city council's input, all conditional use permits require final approval by the mayor and city council. So this item stands, and if you, if you see the last whereas clause in the resolution, the draft resolution, you'll see that it is heading that way, after your approval this evening, or whatever it may be, this item will go to city council for final approval.
I have, so this is all going to be two-bedroom, two-bath, okay. We talked about the washer and, what is going to be the square footage of these units?
To me, sir?
Yes, sir.
All of them are two-bedrooms, two-baths, all of them are 950 square feet.
Okay, and then, what are we looking at on the average?
Base, $250,000.
We're looking at 250 for 900? Okay. You know, I do have some concerns with this, with that neighborhood, and I'm not trying to hold up your project, but originally, we were going to put 16 townhouses in there?
15 townhouses.
15 townhouses? Why aren't we not putting 15 townhouses in there now?
That project, Commissioner, is not sustainable. It's a different world, it's a different economy, you can't sell units for 750,000 square feet on 135th.
750,000?
I'm sorry, $750,000, which is what those units were going to be marketed for. There were actually three stories with access to the roof. They were significant, significant homes, significant homes, and candidly, in today's economy, it's just not sustainable.
Well, you know, you're the developer, I just read the Miami Herald today, where I see this whole condominium market turning around internationally, we're renowned now, people are coming in here from Venezuela and other Central and South American countries and putting big money up there. I mean, I'm not so sure that analysis is correct today, and.
Well, our analysis is showing us that the type of purchaser that would be interested in this product doesn't have inventory left in Miami Beach, doesn't have inventory left on Brickell Avenue, doesn't have inventory left in Aventura, which are premier residential communities. The inventory isn't there. There's a number of projects that are going up now, where the base is going to be significantly higher than our basis, and we. higher than our basis, and we feel very certain that there's a market for our product, for our value.
Well, here's the other thing that I'm getting at. 950 square feet is not a big, a big place at all. And you're going to go for 250, so why not eliminate some of the units, make your units bigger, make them gorgeous, and get people in here with disposable income that'll come forward? You know, I mean, we're talking 950 square feet here, that's, you know, you know, to me, that's, that seems to be very small. And I seriously, and I'm not trying to give you hard time on this, but I seriously have some reservations about the, the community on 135th Street. And I don't want to jump the gun on this, but before I feel comfortable about going forward with a project like this, I mean, to me, 950 square feet is a very small condo. I would like to hear from the community, maybe you should have another meeting with them and postpone this to another month, and, because in good faith, I, I just, I have a problem with this. I, I mean, I, I really do. The size of it, the amount of vehicles going on the street, the language that I originally read here, originally we were going to come in with apartments, now you met with this, and I give you credit for that, thank you, you met with the community, but-
Jose, did we find the letter?
I, you know, I just feel that the community down there-
With the application?
Excuse me, sir, if the community down there was happy with it, and I heard from the Property Owners Association that they were happy with this, then I would go, you know, I would have no reservations. But as Mr. Prevertel pointed out before, and my, I have ser-, that, that whole street has turned around and is really a nice area, and I just don't want to see it economically impacted to the negative, I'd rather see it go to the positive. And I think 950 square feet's small, I think the amount of vehicles going on there, but however, if the neighborhood and the homeowners association were happy with it, then I would go with it. But at this point, I, I have reservations, that's why maybe you should have another meeting with them.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I just clarify three items?
Mr. Eich, have we?
Yeah, I'm done, thank you very much.
Then, yes, go ahead, sir.
I'm reading the letter of intent that we submitted, and there was never, ever, ever any reference to a rental community.
I have it right here, sir.
Well, I'm reading the letter that I, that I penned myself. There was a reference to 750 square feet for one-bedroom, one-bath, and there was reference for 950 feet for two-bedrooms, two-baths.
The original one I had was, was going to be a rental community, and I have to dig through this because I remember reading this quite clearly, that this was going to be a rental, a unit, not, not, not a condo, but a rental unit, and somewhere along the line, we went, and I never knew this because my documents say this is rental, and somewhere along the line, it went from rental to condo, and I don't have anything in here saying it's a condo.
We certainly didn't submit any, any documentation specifically identifying a project as rental. We specifically identified the 48 units, a mix of 1-1s and 2-2s, and candidly, I can't speak to how the language of rental came into the record, but we did change after the fact, and I apologize for staff, candidly, that it happened after the fact. We did send the modifications to staff, it was probably too late to get that information to you, but we've been very transparent, we've been very open, we've been very honest with what our intent is, has been, and will be.
If I could just clarify, Commissioner Eich, we did have meetings, pre-application meetings with the applicant prior to their submission, and it was indicated to us in those meetings that it would be a rental project. So, again, I just want to reiterate, if that has changed, we just need that in writing indicating that it will in fact be a condominium development and not rental.
And I apologize that we didn't update the letter of intent, but we can certainly do that, clarify that, confirm that, and change the one-bedrooms to all two-bedrooms, two-baths.
Okay.
How about the size of the units? Are there any, I honestly, I'm concerned with 950 square feet as a condo. I just think it's, for a two-bedroom, I just think it's very small. And I might, I might, you know, this is what you're saying, you're going to make, how you have to make your sustainability, anyway, that you can reduce the amount of units and make your condos bigger, and get a bigger market share.
It's difficult-
I'm just throwing it out to you, that's all.
Yeah, it's difficult to meet sustainability criteria with large units, candidly. There's a significant amount of factors that go into a product that is very current, very much ahead of the curve, and at the same time, 950 square feet as opposed to 2,000 or 3,000 square feet.
I'm not saying 2,000, but 1,500 in that neighborhood, something in that neighborhood. But I think, I, I, I just think in that neighborhood right now, the way it's coming, it's coming up, I think the people would feel a lot happier. I mean, if they say, hey, they, they, I'll be honest with you, if the neighborhood was here right now and they said, hey, look, we're happy with this project the way you modified it, you showed good faith. I got to say you did. I, I would go along with it, but at this point, I, I think maybe we should have another meeting with them or something, because I, I just feel very uneducated, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that, that you're aware that we made it clear that the meeting was going to be tonight, when we met with the community. And the fact that, you know, during public hearing, we had one resident speak to concerns, there was no, I mean, it's very transparent. We advised them that night that we were going to come in front of you this evening, and that we would certainly make modifications and look to meet with them immediately. So I don't think the neighborhood is not aware of tonight's meeting, and, and I think we have representation of a neighbor that speaks for herself, and not necessarily for the whole community. Again, the community is aware that tonight's meeting was occurring.
Well, as a matter of practical business, that's not an issue before us by itself. A meeting did take place, you made substantive revisions, so you received some measure of community input. Whether or not there should be additional community input is not before this commission. We're not going to go there, we're not going to consider that part of it.
I'd like to remind the applicant that the comments that were made were made under oath, and they carry equal weight in these proceedings to anybody else's comments.
May I, Mr. Chair?
All right, I want to get Mr. Castor.
Please don't give, I don't for one moment doubt your integrity on this project, and I don't doubt your validity for your honesty, and I want to make that perfectly clear.
Thank you.
I, I really do, and if I gave you that inference, I certainly apologize.
Not at all. Thank you, sir.
I just didn't want to-
Not at all.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Castor, will you await your words of wisdom, sir?
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Chair. During your conversation, I, I understand that you mentioned that if for some reason that you should not get approved a 48 unit as opposed to 21, that the project may not be able to move forward because of some issues. I would appreciate if you would enlighten us on some of those issues.
I'm not sure that this is a criteria, but it's the reality that we purchased a piece of property for $2 million, and we've invested since the day we purchased it to today, just about $1 million, without having to turn the property back to lenders, without having to turn the property into foreclosure. We've basically stepped up and did what we had to do so that we can come from new this evening. So using land as a basis for what these units are going to cost to develop, it really is not sustainable to develop this project based on 15 townhomes or even 21 units, impossible. And we really, really believe, we honestly believe, that we are going to develop a product that is really going to enhance the community in terms of values, and for that matter, add to the texture of the community without at all having any inverse, adverse impact whatsoever. You're looking at the first significant developed, development on 135th for a number of years. Not only is it going to be current with all Florida building code requirements, it's going to be sustainable, it's going to attract a significant demographic to the community. It could very well be that we have a lot of buyers that in effect are looking at this as a second home. They may live out of the country, they may live other parts of the state, or for that matter, in other states, and they want a place that they can come, and they're happy to pay what we're going to ask for, for a product that is really 21st century, really 21st century. The inventory that exists on 135th, candidly, is not as current, and can't be as current as what we're proposing. And that's not to say that it isn't beautiful and that it isn't wonderful, but to suggest that this product is going to diminish values, we're not sure how that can occur when we're looking to invest beyond what's been invested, millions of dollars, really to develop what we can, what we believe is an award-winning development that can only enhance the community. So the bottom line is, sooner or later, the architectural model may be excellent. If the business model doesn't work, there's not much that we talk about. So tonight is a very, you know, very honest discussion that in order for the business model to work, in order for this property to get developed, this is what we believe is the right solution, and we're at risk. We have no intention of developing a project that isn't going to be successful. We've already risked $3 million.
Okay, you've mentioned that the prices are going to be about 250,000?
$250,000.
Correct. What about the maintenance, H or E?
There will be a, an association, I'm sorry, yeah, a condominium association fee. We've been careful in how much amenity space, and for that matter, how much amenity area. But again, when we compare with what's happening on Brickell in terms of condominium sales, when we compare what's happening on Miami Beach in terms of condominium sales, and when we compare what's happening in Aventura, we believe that we're going to be very successful on top of the basis of price, that the association costs are going to be reasonable, especially-
You're not sure exactly what the cost is right now?
The exact number, what it's going to be a month?
Approximate, no, approximate.
No, I can't give that to you, sir.
Okay, what about the plan of action, once the building is completed, to keep up with the building, you guys have, to keep up with the building, once it's completed?
At a certain point, by law, we turn over the condominium to the association. We can only hold on to the building based on X amount of units being owned by us. The moment the buyers, if you will, achieve the threshold, the association gets turned over to, to the residents. We, we don't intend to manage this property, other than to the extent that we will, to the point that we turn it over to the condominium association.
Okay. I'm not trying to oppose the project. Obviously, I'm for building. I, as my colleague mentioned, I, I think that the community should meet again with you to finalize any concern before moving forward. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
All right, so that is the commentary of our four commissioners. It's a very interesting scenario here. I never thought washers and dryers could stir up such controversy. To be completely candid, I have a washer and dryer built into my house. I, I take it for granted, and I've never had to use shared laundry facilities. Realistically, how hard is it to build in a washer and dryer in every unit?
Mr. Chairman, I want to clarify that we started with washers and dryers in each unit, and maybe it was my misunderstanding, and I apologize if I misunderstood, but I, I believe, or at least the notes that I took, suggested that communal washer and drying laundry room would be preferred. We're happy to go back and put the washers and dryers in each unit, end of story. That's not a problem.
Excuse me, it can, excuse me, do you mind if I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
Can a homeowner, I've seen other people do it, in that case, once the unit is built, if I wanted to put a washer and dryer in to my unit, could I do so?
If we provide the hookup, yes. If we provide the hookup, yes.
Because I've been to other places that didn't have a washer and dryer, but people threw one in. So, you know, if, if I buy it and I want to use that space for washer and dryer, you provide a hookup, I can do it, correct?
Absolutely.
Just wanted to clear, thank you.
Of course.
If it's included, probably get a more discriminated, you know, a buyer that's a little bit more expecting a little bit better, and would be getting a little bit better. And in the process, you, you move the custodian to where the laundry was, and you open up your common area, it's much bigger, glass doors.
Not a problem.
It's a win-win in that case, and you really haven't lost any space.
Commissioner, that's how we started. Somehow I misunderstood, and I thought that the preference of the community was communal. So I said, no problem, we'll go there. But you're absolutely correct, it actually improves the product, and we're happy to do it. That's where we were over a month ago.
You'll probably get it back on the value of the apartment, says also-
Not a problem.
A little bit of a health concern, I think you're better off with your own laundry for health concerns?
No problem. No problem.
You know, that would seem to me to be a reasonable movement. I, I think Commissioner Prevertel had some useful insights on your floor plan design, and as I listen to the community here, they seem very, very protective of their built-in washers and dryers. And I, yeah, it's nice, I have one of those myself, I kind of, kind of like it, they're full-size in my case, just, I have to say, I'm, I'm very pleased with the fact that you've actually come up front with more parking spaces than are required. I've been on this commission for over 20 years, and it's been one developer after another endlessly pleading to cut the parking by a quarter, by a third, even by a half in some cases, and you've actually come up with far more parking than you needed to have, and I think that's quite commendable. I find it rather renovative, the way in which you've done that. I, I'm in sympathy with Mr. Eich's posturing, and I think 950 square feet is, is rather small. Now, granted, I'm in the house that I moved into back in 1966, so I, I don't know if I'd know what to do with 950 square feet. I freely admit that, I guess I just don't get out very much. And, and, and Mr. Eich may well have a very valid point on that, that a few smaller, a few, slightly fewer units with increased floor space in the range of 1,500 feet might actually be much more marketable. I, I don't know. I look at 135th Street, and I see it as a neighborhood that really, really wants to move up, and, you know, perhaps a larger square footage, with of course a built-in washer and dryer, might help that neighborhood to move up as opposed to just marking time. I don't think your project would depreciate values, but whether it would help the neighborhood appreciate is, is another issue. I understand the problem of the bean counters, there has to be a rate of return on the investment, and you've got to have a clientele to market to. And I am the last person here who would attempt to tell you how to market a condominium unit. I just know that every time our national foreign policy screws up, we get a lot of out-of-town buyers coming in, so I, I realize in the end that, that is your choice, and you've got to crunch your numbers and take a look at what you're doing. I would caution staff that we absolutely have to have the declarat-, the condominium letter of intent clear, because that was very clearly a misunderstanding early on, that this was going to be a rental apartment unit instead of a condominium.
Correct.
I would only vote for this if it were to be a condominium, and in fact, Mr. Gallos, that raises a question, supposing they turn around in six months or a year?
Now, you can, Mr. Chair, with all due respect, you can fashion a condition for approval based on the fact that it will be, and I think the intent was rather clear by the applicant, that they fully intend to have a condominium development. For the extra guarantee, you could also include that as a condition of approval.
I would-
And therefore, the conditional use permit will be null and void should they then decide to turn it into a rental property?
Sounds good. I think that I would absolutely ask the commission to adopt that as one condition of this project.
And if I could add to that, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You could also add a sixth condition indicating that the applicant would have to meet with the homeowners association prior to going forward to the next council meeting. The next council meeting is really three weeks away, or a future council meeting. That way, there's at least conversation prior to final council consideration.
With, with the, with the caveat that certain conditions may, may in good faith be resolved?
Yes.
But at least it gives the parties an opportunity for, to further discussion, rather than, say, killing what could be a, a good project.
Right, I think-
It provides maybe a better mutual meeting of the minds.
I just want- I just want the homeowners to recognize that in fact, the builder apparently was available, and the deficiency there was on the side of the homeowners, but having said that, I have no, no problem, uh, making that a condition, that there be at least a good-faith effort to meet with the homeowners once more before it goes to city council. Mr. H, I believe you, you wanted to throw something else.
I, I, I think that would be appropriate, I would feel, and, and nothing against the investors or the developers, I would feel very comfortable, much more comfortable, voting for the project if you were to, and I'm sorry for the delay, if you were to meet with the homeowners, and they agree to it. I mean, I think you bent over backwards on a lot of issues here. I do have, I do have some concerns, if you were to meet with them, I, 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 I think that would be ideal.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question, just as...
You may, of course.
Yeah. After tonight's meeting, after tonight's meeting, uh, obviously, if it fails, the resolution fails, there's not much more we're gonna talk about, assuming that it is, uh, approved this evening, and it moves forward with your recommendation, um, if I can, are you suggesting that we would, before we come back for a site plan application and so, that we would go to commission, and only the...
Whether, whether this, this, this board, this commission approves or denies or approves the conditions, it's still going to go to city council.
City council.
What we're suggesting is, is that you meet before that, before you define, before you go to city council for final approval. You meet with, again, with the homeowner association.
Council, is it, when does it go to, to city council? Does it go as part of the site plan approval, or does it go to...
It goes as part, as final approval of this, yes, in fact...
Okay.
Yeah, exactly, because they are gonna have the last say in the matter.
For whatever reason, and it's, again, I apologize, I thought that after tonight, with your recommendation for approval, we would then submit and start the site plan process, which obviously, we would have other opportunities to meet again. We have to go to council.
No, and, and I believe Commissioner H, I had addressed that issue with Commissioner H. In fact, the resolution calls for approval by the city council.
Of the conditional use permit.
Got it, okay, now I understand that.
And it's, it's, exactly, it's not a site plan, it's just a conditional use permit, that is what you're here for.
We're here for that, absolutely. So we would go to council, and then once that's approved, then we can start the site plan process.
And city council, just for the record, I believe the next available city council for this item would be March 26.
Correct.
So that gives you ample time to meet again, and perhaps iron out some of these wrinkles, come back, and then we can modify the documents for final city council approval.
Correct.
And again, this isn't your site plan, this is just preliminary to the...
Conditional use permit.
This is for the conditional use permit, just for the bonus, we're talking about bonus.
And you know this condition number two refers to the site plan, once this process has been reviewed and considered by your council. So you're not even at site plan yet.
All right, so we, we understand that, all right? Now, Mr. Patel, you've got nothing further than...
Was, was the intention to get slightly larger apartments, and if so, are you built out to the max right now? Or does it just mean going out 18 inches on both sides?
I, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't want to mislead, I, I don't want to mislead you all, or for that matter, um, your staff or the community. There's very, very, very little ability to increase the units from 950 feet. The units have balconies, altogether between the 48 units, we have about 6,000 square feet of balconies. I don't know if you're suggesting that, you know, make that a conditioned space, but we don't have the ability, and, and I don't want to mislead you, and I don't want to ask the community to go down a path, and then meet with us and say, well, where are your 1,500 square foot units? It just, it's, it's not feasible for us to do.
Right. But is there, is there a chance, if you haven't already used up your open space and other requirements and such, if you have room to inflate a little bit, and I, it's a little odd that we're requesting a possible inflation of the project, but if you were to go out 18 inches or so to the north and to the south, not changing the design...
We would, we would have...
You'd pick up a thousand, you'd be at 1,000 square feet or so.
We, we'd be, we'd have some other issues, setbacks and so on and so forth. And, and, and again, if it's, if it's going from 950 to 1,000, you know, we can certainly try and see how we can achieve that, but I, I'm not gonna lie to you, I'm not gonna tell you that we're gonna show up to meet with the community with 1,500 square foot units, because it's not possible, it's just not possible.
Maybe to sort of satisfy some of the concerns, maybe 1,000 is doable, by, by going to the north and south just that little bit. It's not changing the design, uh, matter of fact, you already have, your core walls are already extended out.
We're popping out, you're absolutely correct.
So you have room possibly from a setback.
I mean, we, we may have to ask for a waiver in terms of reduction of a setback, but again, I think, if, if we're talking plus, if, if the magic number is 1,000, um, but I don't want to mislead you and tell you I'm gonna meet with the community, and I'm gonna show them 1,500 square foot units, because I would be lying, I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna, um, we just, we, we can't go there, we can't go there. The only way we can get bigger significantly is by reducing the number of units, and that really doesn't work, it just doesn't work with the business model. We feel very comfortable, uh, in terms of the price points that we want to start, we feel very comfortable with the size of units, vis-à-vis the price points, vis-à-vis the buyer, vis-à-vis the competition. And candidly, I think we would be putting ourselves at risk with 1,500 square foot units in this economy.
You know, I, I must, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, give them a more shot.
I, I, I look at the papers every Sunday, and I see the real estate market, and I see condos going for big money out there, and, and... I, I don't know, hack, 250,000 for a 950 square foot condo just doesn't, to me, make sense, I wouldn't buy it. And I'm not trying to insult you, I, that to me, I, I, there's no way I'm gonna buy a condo for two and a half, for 950 square feet. And I'm looking at the papers and, uh, every Sunday, what was bought and what was sold, and, you know, I, I see big things going for 300, 400 grand out there, and, you know, this, okay, I'm not, I'm like you said, this is my opinion, I mean, you know.
At the end of the day, Commissioner, we're looking for 48 buyers. This is not, you know, 480, this is not 4,800. We're talking about 48 units in one of the premier, premier locations in Miami-Dade County.
You, you just said it, the premier location, I go down North Bay Shore Drive, and, and, and I see a beautiful condo on the bay over there, and, and I don't know what the exact square footage is, but it's a high-end condo, and it's going for good money, and it was built, uh, I think, 20 years ago, and, and it might, might be going for 400, 500,000 bucks. And, uh, this is a premier location, you do have the, the preserve to your east. You do have the bay, you do have all that greenery behind you, so that, I mean, I'm, okay, thank you, I said all I had.
And we will meet with the community for sure, between now and city council.
All right, you've got a...
Thank you.
You must schedule the community meeting, and, uh, the residents must understand that they have an obligation to cooperate and play an active role, and, you know, if they don't, well, then that's, you've done your part. All right, and there was one other condition that we had wanted to work into that? The declaration...
Declaration of, uh, which, which, which documents have to be... Which documents have to be recorded after approval by the state of Florida?
And to make sure the documentation gets in, that this is a confirmed condominium and not an apartment, and as a condition, if they choose to revamp and subsequently want to switch back to an apartment, that they would have to bring this back before the commission. All right, that's a recommendation, all right? Harry, no other recommendations, at this time, the chair will call for a motion.
Such a motion to encompass the amendments that were made by the applicant concerning the, the documents here indicate still production of one bedroom, there is no such thing, so it's 100% two-bedroom, at least two-bedroom apartments. So I would urge the chair to, you know, offer the motion with those amendments.
All right, we offer the motion with the following amendments, that this is going to be all two-bedroom units, and the developer is going to make himself available to the community for another meeting, and the developer is going to consider washers and dryers in every unit. And understood too, that if the developer subsequently wants to change back to a rental unit, then this would have to come back before this commission.
One more, that the square footage be no less than 950. Because the margin right now shows 750 to 950, let's make sure that at least it's gonna be no less than 950.
The per-unit square footage can be no less than 950 square feet, and the board would like to see a little more. We do like the parking and the setbacks and the landscape, and you've done a good job with that. All right, with those items in mind, the chair calls for a motion.
So moved.
A second.
So moved and seconded, moved by Mr. H, seconded by Mr. Castor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
No.
Yes, no?
No, I'm fair.
Yes.
You're 4 to 1, no.
No, okay, we're 4 to 1 in favor. All right. All right, good luck to all of you. All right, give the time to second. Good luck to the boards. One down, one to go. Yeah, we'll, we'll take five minutes, let these people move out, and get the next group to move forward. It's time to make the men's and ladies' rooms, because this next session is gonna be lengthy.
Okay.
You didn't plan to go home early tonight, did you?
No, no.
No, I didn't think so. It's gonna be a long night, yes.